Is he ready? Not yet. Okay, good evening. We thank everybody for being here. We're gonna take a few quick briefs to check the Cubs score tonight, so be prepared.
She did want to cancel the meeting.
No. When she said the third game's Wednesday, I said then cancel the meeting. And for Sox fans, we respect you as well, but any Chicago team that gets this far. Hey, let's go. Okay, tonight, we're going to have two really quick public hearings. We're going to start the first one, which is the school fire prevention and safety bonds. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Jill, may I have a roll call to determine a quorum?
Yes, Mrs. Wachholder.
Present.
Mrs. Lazarowski.
Here.
Mr. Tarjan. Mr. Genovese. Mr. Perisi.
Here.
Mrs. Salvador.
Here.
Mr. Theberg.
Here.
Okay, the reason for the hearing. It's being held to receive comments regarding the district's intent to sell bonds in the amount not to exceed $260,500,000 for the purpose of conforming is existing facilities that house students to the building code, promulgated by the State Board of Education of the state of Illinois by altering, reconstructing, and repairing said facilities and having equipment purchased and installed therein. At this time, is there any written or oral testimony about the bond sale? Okay, Jill, may I have a roll call to close the hearing?
Yes, Mrs. Wachholder.
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarowski.
Yes.
Mr. Loop.
That's me, yes.
Yes, Mr. Perisi. I wanted to say Genovese, I'm sorry. Mrs. Salvador. Yes, Mr. Theberg.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing number two is a waiver of section 17-1.5 of the school code. Jill, may I have a roll call to determine a quorum?
Mrs. Wachholder.
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarowski.
Yes.
Mr. Tarjan. Mr. Genovese. Mr. Perisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador.
Yes, Mr. Theberg.
Yes.
Okay, the reason for this hearing. It's being held to receive comments regarding the waiver of section 17-1.5 of the school code. Is there any discussion on this at this time? Okay. Any public comments at this time? Okay, there's no written or oral testimony about this waiver. Jill, can we please have a roll call to close the hearing?
Yes. Mrs. Wachholder.
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarowski.
Yes.
Mr. Perisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador.
Yes, Mr. Theberg.
Yes.
And at this time, I would like to open our regular board meeting. Wednesday, October 8th, 2025. Can everyone please, we welcome everyone that's here, and can we please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jill, may I please have a roll call to determine a quorum of our regular meeting?
Yes. Mrs. Wachholder.
Present.
Mrs. Lazarowski.
Here.
Mr. Tarjan. Mr. Genovese. Mr. Perisi.
Here.
Mrs. Salvador.
Here.
Mr. Theberg.
Here.
Okay, at this time, do we have any public comment? And now, we're very exciting, excited to honor someone very special with our Pnoyer pride.
Deputy Chief Schuber, can you come on up here? I can move this either way.
All right. Our Pnoyer pride, we always honor. It's our time to really reflect and honor people who've done greatness for Pnoyer. And you're the Pnoyer pride tonight. Your 27 years of service, you're retiring from the village of Norwich, and I have to say Wayne's service and dedication to our community has been second to none. Deputy Chief Schuber has been the liaison for the Norwich Police Department and Pnoyer School, at least for 10 years with me, and I think many years before that, correct? Although he did go to Ridgewood, but we do consider him part of our Pnoyer family. When it came to safety of Pnoyer students, staff, and parents, Wayne made himself available to us 24/7. I have to say, there was never a time I couldn't pick up the phone and call him. My husband's also a police officer. He'd get very upset with me and say, "You cannot be calling the deputy chief for this dumb stuff." I'm like, "No, he's that committed to Pnoyer," and always made sure things were taken care of, whether it was a student situation or kids playing soccer at 2:00 in the morning on our field. There was never a time too late or early for Wayne. He always took part in safety in crisis, staff trainings, meeting with parents to problem solve. How many parking lot and car line committee meetings did we have, Wayne? Those were always fun. Too many. But most of all, he made sure that our students felt safe, they felt supported, and they felt like they belonged as part of our community here in Norwich and Norwood Park Township. You know, you always look for opportunities to strengthen our community, such as starting our national night out here for our Harwood Heights, Norwich, and Norwood Park community. And this event has become that big back-to-school event where the kids look forward to, and that's always, to me, that's gonna be the one thing when I, every, every first Tuesday of August when I'm there, that's like the Wayne Schuber legacy here for us and our kids. On a personal note, I have appreciated your friendship through these years. You've mentored me, you've helped me through some hard times. I still think you owe me like two or three lunches, but we gotta keep better score on that. But everyone here at Pnoyer wishes you a happy and healthy retirement and lots of great travel with Michelle. We're excited for, to hear your stories, and we have a little token of appreciation for you.
On behalf of the school board, we'd like to present you with this little remembrance of us. And I've been around this place a very, very long time. It was always so comforting when we were having any kind of event, and I would walk in and you'd be the first face I would see. I knew our kids were safe, I knew our staff was safe, and it was gonna be a good night. Of course, we will miss you, but we will always appreciate all that you've brought to Pnoyer and just how loyal you've always been to us. So we just wanna say thank you, and we wish you the very, very best. And I was always taught to respect police regardless. This is a man you can respect, not only as a police officer, but just as a genuine person. So thank you.
Can you get a picture? All right, all right. All right, one more.
I know how much you love board meetings, but now you're retired. You don't have to stay at this time. You're always welcome back, but we're just very honored to have had you with us, you know, for such a long time, and you're always welcome here at Pnoyer. And we thank you for everything, Wayne.
And to your fellow officers, we appreciate you very much, too. Thank you.
You can stay and listen about insurance if you want.
Okay, at this time, we would need a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Jill, may, are there any questions? Jill, may I have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Wachholder.
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarowski.
Yes.
Mr. Perisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador.
Yes.
Mr. Theberg.
Yes.
And now, we will go through our information items.
All right, we have Amanda Watt here with our insurance. She's gonna go ahead and present our insurance renewal.
Good evening. It's everyone's favorite part. I don't know how I can follow what just happened. I don't know, Wayne, but I almost started crying myself. That was very emotional. Just, you can just see how much he meant to you guys, so. All right, so everyone's fun, favorite topic is our health insurance. So we'll go through our current program and then kind of the renewal and what we're doing for this next year. Just a reminder with Pnoyer, we have the Blue Cross Blue Shield Group Medical, the dental is through Delta Dental, then we have a flexible spending account through BVP, then we have a basic life and accidental death and dismemberment policy through Dearborn, which is also through Blue Cross for $75,000, and then we have an employee assistant program through CureLink. So the group medical program. So for the people that are not aware, and on the next page, you'll probably see a very large number. And if you're not aware, we've been getting record-breaker increases this year. For the first time, Pnoyer got a very large increase for the medical insurance. So we did get a plus 22.46% with Blue Cross Blue Shield with the two grandmother plans, which is the ONE PPO plan and the ONE HMO plan. Again, these are the grandmother plans that still maintain some of the lower copays, the very large networks, and lower deductibles. So with that being said, just looking a little bit at the history of what we've had, pretty much the last time we had a larger increase was in 2020. So it has been quite some time, and even in 2020, we only saw a plus 13%, 13.05%. So this was quite a large increase. Mainly, it was due to the change in risk, which is mainly impacting with claim history. So we're hoping this is a one-off and that next year will go back down and that this is not a trend. But, so that's what we've been doing the last couple of weeks, is trying to figure out a solution and what we wanna do with this increase. So that's kind of what I wanna talk about next, is what we, what we did, what strategies, what alternative solutions we explored to combat the plus 22% increase. So the first thing we did is did a benchmarking report to review where your school is with the current structure, with the renewal plans, to see, you know, what the plan structure is compared to alternative options, comparing it to other schools in the region, comparing it with the size, the structures, the contribution, to see where we, you know, stand. Then we also explored just keeping Blue Cross, but looking at reduced price plans, which would be moving away from the grandmother plans. The thing with the grandmother plans is, once you move off of those plans, you lose them. You cannot access them again, because once, once you get off of them, they're gone. So we did look at moving to the ACA plans within Blue Cross to see about reducing the cost. So just looking over at the benchmarking reports, the one thing which I know we've talked about probably every year is just the grandmother plans, how rich they are. And as you can see from the benchmarking, they're market-leading, because, again, it's very hard to access the networks that you guys currently have with these two plans, the PPO and HMO, with the price point. So that was probably the biggest thing we were trying to figure out, is we could look at switching the plans to reduce the cost of the overall budget, but then we would have to trade off the network size as well as then how much employees were paying out-of-pocket throughout the year for procedures and copays. So just looking at your plans that you currently have with the renewal structure and the price point is, and I know this is a little bit small, but this is the HMO plan, and pretty much every bracket, except probably the family contribution, is market-leading. So, you know, the copays, what the company is paying for employee costs, everything is pretty much at the very top, tip-top of being market-leading with the structure. So with all the comparable schools, it's saying that you, this school with this structure is offering a very, very rich plan compared to what other schools that are similar to yours with the size is offering in this market area. Same with the PPO plan. So what we did then is looked at, if we moved away from the grandmother plans, though, what are the benefits and what are the drawbacks? So the benefit mainly is, we would have a lower increase overall, but we would be losing the larger networks. So we wouldn't, with the PPO plan right now, that has access to the nationwide, we would have to reduce that down, as well as right now, the HMO has the larger advantaged HMO network. We would have to look at dramatically increasing the out-of-pocket costs that employees would be paying throughout the year. It would be much a higher deductible, copays, as well as one that was a big feature is the more specialty medications. With the grandmother plans, they're currently covered. With all the new ACA plans, they would be considered a tier five or six, which ranges from 250 to 450 copays per prescription. Yeah. Sorry, I know the reaction. It's, it's always hard to see, and I do have some other examples to show you, and again, I know this is a little bit smaller, but this was a good example that was brought up, is looking at if I had the current plan versus if I moved to the new ACA lower costing plan, what would it be costing if I had like a baby? So with the current PPO plan, if, you know, Peg had a baby, and again, they use the exact same cost structures, the exact same, you know, visits and all of that, if we kept it, they would pay $1,080 for the whole situation. If we moved to the new PPO plan, it would be less overall for the premium. There would still be an increase, but reduce costs, but out-of-pocket, the employee, your teachers or administrators would be paying over $7,000 for that procedure. So, and again, here's the example with the HMO. HMO, having a baby, you would pay $90. With the HMO plan, you'd be paying over $2,000. And that's with every procedure and a situation, everything like that. So it wouldn't necessarily just be the monthly cost. It's also looking at how it would be impacting the employees daily, you know? If they are going to pick up a prescription, instead of having these really low copay structures they have with the grandmother plan, they might now be paying the six-tier structure, where they might be paying an $80 copay or $110 copay, or now they have these much higher, you know, tier five, tier six. So that was what we were going back and forth of trying to decide, do we want to look at changing the structure of the plan and looking at maybe doing a plus five or six percent increase, but then shifting it where employees would be looking at, you know, managing that cost throughout the year versus hanging on to these plans, hoping this is just gonna be, you know, a one-year kind of situation. It'll manage out, and that we'll just, you know, get through this. Because again, once we get off those grandmother plans, we can't go back to them. So that's also kind of the sticking point. So again, then looking at the financial part of it, because of course, that's the piece of it, is overall with the expiring monthly, roughly, it's almost $50,000, and with the renewal incoming, it'll be almost $60,000. So again, breaking that down, seeing how many people were in each, you know, plan. And right now, we have a lot more people in the PPO plan than the HMO plan. With that being said, there is some opportunities with this increase that if people are on the PPO plan and can move to the HMO plan, they actually won't see too much of shift as we look at your current full monthly premiums for employees and the renewal full monthly premiums for employees. So again, that's something to think about. These numbers are quite, you know, large with the increase. I don't, there's no sugarcoating it. We wanted to address that head-on. So it was mainly just trying to decide, do we wanna look at moving off these plans and moving to, you know, the new plans or not? When we look, though, at the stipend that the school does provide, the good news is, even with the increase, employees will still be able to pick the HMO or the PPO plan at a $0 cost. So even with the increase with the stipend, they still can get the coverage and not have to pay for the cost. It's mainly gonna be if we are gonna be adding the dependents. And what I was referring to earlier is if someone is currently on the PPO plan and they do have their dependents, if they are considering, they can look at going to the HMO plan, and that is very similar cost to what they're currently paying. So if you look at the current monthly employee contribution in the PPO line, if they have a spouse, it's $221.91. And if you look at the renewaling in the bottom on the HMO line, for a spouse, it's $282. So again, it would be moving to the HMO plan. That does have a $0 deductible. HMOs are way more user-friendly than ever before. You have to have a primary doctor, but it's mainly a primary medical group. So you don't have to have just one person. So if you pick like Northwestern as your medical group, you can see a different doctor very quickly and easily. And we can definitely, we are coming out next month to educate, to make sure people are aware, so they know they do have choices. Because the last thing we wanna do is not educate, to let them know that, you know, it's mainly gonna impact the people that are on the HMO plan, that do have the dependents. They're gonna have, you know, the higher cost than they're used to with the dependents. So that's kind of where we were at, is trying to decide if we were gonna keep the grandmother plans overall or move to the new plans with taking a lower contribution. And what we decided is we are gonna keep the grandmother plans for another year, hope that we are going to just try to manage the costs. And again, we're gonna be doing education, probably gonna be doing more education throughout the year to try to manage costs, to make sure that we are, making sure we know how to use the plan, just make sure we're using it right, staying in network, and just making sure we're just aware that just because maybe we're paying a lower cost doesn't mean that that's what's impacting the overall cost for the company. So again, just pieces like that. We're gonna put a plan together to make sure to stay on top of that. So that's what we're looking like for the medical this year. The dental program, there was only a very slight increase of 2.84%, which overall was, as you can see, on the left is the current monthly, and then on the right is the renewaling. So for example, the dental PPO is $43.72, and it's going to $45.03. The HMO dental is actually not increasing at all. And there's no price change for the group basic life and AD&amp;D. Another thing to note is you guys both, with these two lines, both also, and the benchmarking was above market as well. So just so you know, the benchmarking showed that your school, out of hundreds of schools across multiple states, is leading the market with the current benefit plan structure. So that is something to be proud of and shout out. Not everyone always realizes, you know, until you see the other side of it, where you're like, "What is that? How much is that copay?" I know, that's all I'm doing right now with these meetings, so. And then here is the breakdown of the monthly premium chart with the stipend, the coverage, the tiers, and then also including the PPO and the DHMO for the dental. And again, this will be included on Employee Navigator for the employees as well as in the benefit packets that we will be bringing out for employees, the onsite meeting that we'll have in November. We will continue with the employee assistant program with the CureLink, which we do have reports, and employees are using that to assist with different, you know, issues. Personal, you know, work-life balance. A lot of people think this is mental health, but they have, you know, so much more to that. It's 24/7. A lot of employees really do like this. Families can use this as well. We strongly encourage this anytime we have a meeting. We get a lot of positive feedback from it. Very easy to use. Again, anytime, if there's any situation, we do encourage employees, let us know, but all we've ever heard is positive feedback from it. And then open enrollment and timeline, like I just mentioned, we'll be using Employee Navigator to process all the enrollments, and we'll have the open enrollment meeting onsite on Monday, November 3rd, where we'll be meeting with everyone to go through these benefits. And then here's just a timeline of where we started. You know, the process of meeting, going through, talking with everyone, going through the benefit committee, making sure that we were trying to come to the same decision. I do wanna thank everyone, especially Dr. Kopp. I can't, appreciate it so much of how much we, we were really trying to come up with a solution. Like I've said before, you know, I really love working with your school and everyone here. Everyone is more than generous with your time and energy and effort. And so it, I never like to see any company get increases, but it does hurt when, you know, you guys get this kind of stuff, when you, you know, your hands are kind of tied with that stuff, so. But that's what we're doing this year, and we're gonna do everything possible, so this is a fluke and a one-time thing. So you might get sick of me with education this year, maybe some flyers and stuff, but that, just know it's in good spirits of just trying to maintain the cost so that we don't see this again. And that is all I have. Any questions? Thoughts, concerns?
Board, do you have any questions? So Pat and I ran the numbers. We're anticipating it's gonna be about a $50,000 increase to the budget for this fiscal year. So we are, we're already gonna amend the budget, because we're gonna be doing those balance transfers. So we'll include that in there. But moving plans would end up costing every employee, teachers, care professionals, everyone out, quite a bit out-of-pocket. And currently, staying with the plan we have, it covers everyone singly at 100%, so very low copays and deductibles.
And we could never get it back.
No, we can never get it back. When I first came here as superintendent, we had Colleen, she's now retired, but Colleen, I've known her for a very long time, and she could, she was shocked at how good our insurance is. She's like, "You've got the best insurance out of all my clients." So it, we're very lucky. We did, I mean, we had some staff members who went on their husband's insurance, and they're coming back on ours, because they just said like, "There is nothing else out there like it."
You can't beat it with your, your network and the deductibles. That, I work with hundreds of, there is nothing, nothing like it. There's just not, I mean, it, not with the price that you're paying. Even though, you know, I know I say that, it's still hard, because there is an increase, and no matter what, it's still expensive. But then comparing to try to even get close to that, we're talking like double the price, even get close, and it's still, with the grandmother plans, especially like the ER and stuff like that, they don't do that anymore. Where you just have like the flat copays. It has like a copay of like $500 or $1,000. So the second you walk in, you're paying that. Then you have to pay your deductible, which is insane what we're seeing for January 1st right now. I mean, we're looking at, for an individual, $800, $9,000 now, but we were looking at like $4,500 or $4,500 or $4,500. or four thousand, five thousand. Then you pay co-insurance, then you pay an out-of-pocket. Right now, HMO has zero, zero dollars. You just pay like, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars and then that's it. So it's between, you know, it's hard, but just looking overall, like your employees don't have to pay out of pocket for the most part, so.
Well, thank you. I know this was, I know we've met with you, Dr. Kup just met with you. So thank you for putting so much into it to make us see exactly what we have.
We appreciate you and we'll see you on November third.
And you don't have to stay for the meeting either. I'm sure you've had a long day.
Yes, that's okay. I don't mind coming to you guys. You need me, you know where to find me.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.
All right, district enrollment?
Okay, before that, just want to let everyone know we're at the top of the seventh, four, three Cubs. Keep your fingers crossed. Okay, we've stayed pretty steady with enrollment. We gained one more student. And as I said last month, we've been doing a lot of preschool screenings and we'll be having more preschool friends join us. But I feel like we're gonna maintain consistent from the last year. Any questions? FOIA report, any questions on the FOIAs? I'm sure you've seen in your Illinois Association of School Board newsletters, there is legislation, a lot of these FOIAs are AI-generated and sent out to multiple schools. There is legislation right now to try to ban the AI-generated. We get quite a bit from Owen Wang, who's not a real person.
Yes.
So we'll see. All right, principals report?
So we've been busy with curriculum over the last month and a half or so. And, and looking at data too, looking at student data. And this is all tied back to our strategic plan. As you all know, we are almost done with our first meetings with ELA revisions. We have another grade level, a couple, three more grade levels to meet with tomorrow. They've been going very well. We've been creating action plans that teachers can do behind the scenes as the year progresses and be ready for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year with building up some of our deficit areas and maybe some of the gaps in our curriculum and just making sure that things are aligned both horizontally across a grade level, but vertical alignment too. So we're building on those literacy, those priority standards. So it's a lot of work that we dug into, but I'm really proud of the team, all the teachers that we've met with so far and will support them throughout the school year to get that work done. The staff also had our fall data days last week. Ms. Norgard and Ms. Tronco and the team just did a great job leading everything out. And the teachers once again came with, just really dug into this data, this map data in areas of reading and math and looked at the tier two and the tier three students, particularly the tier three students. We know that they have a set of interventions and supports in place. It's those tier two students that we really want to close that gap and support them in the classroom with generalized instruction and interventions in the classroom, but also utilizing that enrichment time. So again, we, we came up with like plans on what that's gonna look like at every grade level. And we'll be doing that every trimester to kind of check in how things are going. And so, yeah, it's been, it's been very productive in that part of our world in, in Pinoyar. And on the other side, all the great extracurriculars and everything, that how we support kids out of the classroom, it's just, it's been a great fall. If you don't know, our, both our boys and our girls softball teams won their blue divisions. I don't, I know I haven't been here that long, but I, from what I've heard, that's never happened before, not in softball. And so it was pretty cool and our coaches-
We actually had to order a banner for the gym because we didn't have one for them.
Well, yeah, that's how you know it's, yeah.
Very exciting.
Or maybe it happened before we had banners, but it's been a long time, so. The, and they did amazing. Our cross-country team did amazing. We didn't have a lot of cross-country kids and we really didn't want to cancel the program, so we brought up fifth graders and those fifth graders crushed it. It was like a fifth grade team. And one of those fifth graders scored, was in the top ten at the conference meet and actually had a medal. And it's been a long time for that in cross-country too. And now our boys soccer program has started up. There was over forty kids that tried out and Coach Nelson, I think, ended up with eighteen or twenty that he took. So we had a lot of turnout and they're already, you know, tied a team in the gold division and beat a team this week, so. And then girls volleyball. The word on the street, I don't want to put anything bad out there in Emojo, but the girls varsity volleyball team is supposed to be just absolutely amazing. And the coach is already saying like, this might be a whole championship between the girl, gold and the blue division, so just put it out there. But it's really, it's really great to see. I've just, I've loved to watch all that because, as you know, what goes on in our classroom is so important to me. But really promoting the growth outside of the classroom is equally important to me as principal of Pinoyar. So I'm really proud of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Hawks.
An exciting sports year so far. All right, our strategic plan, we continue to move along. I want to make mention that the Illinois School Report Card will be released October thirtieth and we're working simultaneously with that. The administration's able to preview that. It's not open to the public yet, but we are working with that to create a data dashboard on our website that we'll be rolling out to parents. That aligns with our strategic plan. We'll be doing that in November. So we'll be presenting that to the board in November. We had a team of administrators and our team leaders attended two-day conference this week in Naperville with, through Solution Tree on professional learning communities. And they linked me in on their notes Monday morning and by the afternoon on Monday, they already had five pages of great notes, very thoughtful. And I think the aha moment was like really looking at those high-level teams that look at student data and create great systems. We have a lot of that in place, just organizing it. So well, that'll be an ongoing conversation this year to look at that. Something we want to move to in the future that is part of our strategic plan. So a lot of great work from all of our staff. Any questions on that? Hand in hand, our Curriculum Coordinating Council met last week. We had a great meeting. And two things that they'll be bringing to the November board meeting is structured learning has completed their ELA curriculum. And I have to say, in, in the area, we are the only special ed program that has specific curriculum for them. And it's, it's really great to see that our students that are in that program get exposure to what our general ed kids are doing. So we're very excited to have the board approve that. And then there was some tweaks to the sixth grade science curriculum. Catherine worked this summer with the teachers with that and will, they'll be brought to the board for, for approval as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
And then we put this all up on the website, so it's very transparent. Parents, community members. So we are waiting for Spanish to get another year in because there might be some shifts. That's still a work in progress. And the same thing with CTE. But otherwise, all of our curriculum is up on our website that's been adopted by the board. All right, at your seat is, is a couple of things from the Facilities Committee, which also met last week. It was a very busy week last week. First of all, before we had our Facilities Committee meeting, we had our Phase Three, and I know I had sent an email to the board. We had our Phase Three bid opening and the bids came in much higher than we expected. We had budgeted about one point eight million dollars for the Phase Three project. And I think just there was a lot of nervousness from the contractors with the amount of cabling that had to be moved and wire that had to be pulled just came in really high. So we sat down and rethought the project and we're gonna wait to move the server, but we're gonna move back out to bid at the beginning of November with, with hopefully board approval at the November meeting to build out that district office, do the safety enhancements, have the server space ready to go, and then we can slowly start moving that in. So that was, that's one option that we have. So we talked about it as a group and you'll see you have, I thought it was just easier to, to look at this as a printout. We have the current Pinoyar tenure plan, which was revised last year. So it has final Phase One costs. We're still, we're still closing out Phase Two, but we feel pretty confident with these numbers. We did come in pretty well in budget with that, especially since we were able to recoup the asbestos abatement with the life safety amendment that we did, the emergency. Phase Three, you'll see, we have on there, so we're not gonna be able to do all this. So what we did is that committee talked through. If you look at the one that has the yellow highlight on the front that says revision number two pending approval at the November meeting. You know, that committee really talked about, and Sheila was at that committee meeting, like what, what do we do? You know, they tasked our architect, like what would we do to really close out every single pending item here at Pinoyar? So we're talking about NPR, kitchen, site improvements, which would be our parking lots, in our back lot, our, our field, which I know Board Member Bieber had said it's not in great shape, our softball field. So really looking at everything, creating additional sixteen parking spaces and really bringing that back up. So that packet is, there's a separate packet from our architect that kind of goes through a presentation that they did at the Facilities Committee. So if you just want to kind of take a look at that, we'll just kind of talk through. So the slides with the Phase Three addition, this will, we're still gonna go out to bid and hopefully award that. But then we go into facility planning. So it would be improvements to the, to the gym. There's a couple of slides on that, a couple of pages on that. New, new bleachers, our bleachers are going on twenty-six years old. New scoreboard, some new mechanicals for the basketball nets. There would be improvements made in the NPR. That would make it more user-friendly. We would bring the kitchen back to a working kitchen, cooking kitchen. Currently is just a warming kitchen, so we would do that. I wanna, the facilities planning with the field pictures on it, that's actually Schiller Park's middle school.
That looks familiar.
Yeah. They're also a client of DLA. This, they had the same issues we did. They had, they had a field that they was not usable, so they put underground water retention. They weren't required to do that, but they went ahead and put that in hoping it would help the drainage. It didn't. So then this past year, they ended up putting a turf field in and they've had no water problems. It's cut down on their maintenance costs, their manpower. And you can kind of see in the top picture that they've incorporated their softball field into the soccer field. I believe they have less, less acres than we do for their field and they were able to make that work. So that was part of this recommendation is looking at a permanent solution for our field, doing a turf field that we'd be able to use all year round. Because currently, once, once November hits and we get any snow on that field, it is just wet and it stays wet until June, like eighteenth. So the field is just, it just does not drain properly. Another picture on there would just be improvement of our back lot. We've kind of had these, we've put these two playgrounds in. I believe one is about eight years old. The other one is coming up on twenty years old, but they're not near each other. We've put some benches back there, but nothing, it's kind of been makeshift. So we would really be looking at redoing the back lot to maximize space for all of our kids from age three to fourteen so that we had some, and some possible green space back there, so it's not all just lot. And also like reworking where the garbage truck comes in so that that's a little safer. So, and improving the side on Cumberland there as well. So you'll see DLA kind of breaks down what the cost would be for what we're calling possible Phase Four. This would probably need to go to the community for a vote to sell these bonds. But the, this is, this is the recommendation from the Facilities Committee would be to move forward with a March vote on this to the community. And then we will be bringing it as soon as our audit's complete. In the next two weeks, we'll be scheduling a finance committee. We'd also be talking it through there. So my, my final, it would really need to go through both committees and the final recommendation coming to the board. And we'll be looking at in December, the board taking action on another possible referendum. And then that, then we would be done with everything. Part of the cost of doing any outside site improvement is we would have to put a substantial underground water retention in the field. And that would be to do any, anything other than resurfacing the parking lots. Any change to either front or back lot or the field would cause us to have to do that. And that, that does bring the cost up. So this, this would be a project that we probably would not be able to save money for, for the future. Would, would have to come from, from the residents. Any questions on that? And now, you know, we've shifted some things on this tenure, facilities plan as well, because now we can issue bonds to pay for roofs, boilers, those mechanicals that we weren't able to do two years ago. So, so that really helps us. And, you know, we actually, Pat and I had a call today with our rating creditor for our upcoming bond sale. And, you know, they're always interested in knowing, how is your life safety? And we are in great shape. You know, a couple of years ago, we were shutting down bathrooms and closing off water fountains. We've completely taken care of all those issues. Our life, our life, after we're done with Phase Two here, our whole life safety survey will be completed. Everything will be checked off. So this is just really improving those other things that, that are outside the school and the NPR, the la, and the kitchen, which are the last two inside issues that we have. And updating the gym. I know we still somehow, there are people that still call it the new gym, but it's, it's going on twenty-six years old. It's not a new gym anymore.
And we've never spent any money.
Yeah. Questions, thoughts?
I just want to add, before this meeting took place last week, we had a school come to tour our building. That was like, oh, you want to see our building? Come on in. Their entire board came. And I thought, oh, they'd come in, they'd look around. They wanted to see every room. They wanted to know what made you want to do this, what made you want to do that. And they, I have to say, for lack of a better word, they were very impressed with the money we had and how it was spent. And they had their pads and they were writing down all kinds of notes and so, you know, it's the older schools now that are realizing we can't keep putting Band-Aids on. We've gotta get the community to realize that. And they were like, well, if you did it, I hope we can do it. And we offered, any, you know, any thing we can do or whatever, let us know. But like when Kristen said about the gym being that old, I was like, what? We just built that gym. Because it seems like we've never really spent any money in the gym after we built it. You know, it's served, it's doing what it, but it's getting old. So that's where we kind of have to start looking at now. And for all of this, twenty-five years down the road, somebody is gonna be looking at all of this. How can we update this and what can we do? Because it only lasts so long. So I think we've got our community understanding now that we spend our money properly and we try to do our very best with the money we had. So I think they have the confidence in knowing that whatever we're gonna do is gonna definitely benefit Pinoyar from that years down the road.
Are there any strong opinions either way on this?
No, I was just thinking, the last referendum passed in twenty-three, right? So if we're gonna go into March of next year to put on this three years later-
So if we're going to go into March of next year to put on this three years later, I, I know why we need it.
Three, three years.
Three years, sorry, three years later. What are we thinking? How, how is the community going to perceive this? And I mean, it passed great. We, we, we know the strategy we used in that last referendum. This is a different one. Just I'm thinking of how the community is going to respond. That's all I'm thinking.
So I mean, I'll be honest with you. I've, I've had a lot of comments and questions about, especially with our neighboring school district to the north, they just did huge renovations this summer. One of them was playgrounds. They budgeted a half million dollars for each school for the playgrounds. We have a lot of parents going up there utilizing playgrounds. I know Maria, we've talked about it. And, you know, I've, a lot of questions I've had from parents are, when are we getting new playgrounds? When are we getting this? Like that, that is, that is what a playground costs. So if we're looking to make those hu, and plus, if we're going to remove a playground and, and add a new one, we are going to, we would have to continue with the water retention. So I, I think parents, like Sheila said, see the value in what we've done with the money we've, we have and what-
I agree with that, yes.
And I think the question that they have now is what would it take to finish everything and be done with it? So I, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, we could put it out there and they can, they can say no. Or we put it out there and they say, let's get it done. And, you know, have, have this really great school that has, has no, no facilities issues. And know that we have a tenure plan to address the mechanicals that are coming up, the roof. And that, you know, moving forward, it's going to be maintenance and, and upkeep. But this is all really infrastructure stuff that we just, we wouldn't have the capital money to save up and do.
And will we, is that committee that was helping last time with the referendum be helping with this one?
I, you know, I think we would have some parent support on it, but probab, yeah, probably.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the marketing and how to spin the message and show that it's going to be, it's an investment in the community.
Right.
Before it wasn't, now it is. I can see it.
Right, right. I mean-
Well, I brought up at that meeting that I have a son that lives in Parker Ridge with a young child. And he's lived there for four years and yes, his taxes have gone up crazy over the last few years. But now that he has a child of his own, he is like, when those new playgrounds opened at Parker Ridge, he couldn't, he was blown away. He was like, we will use these for years to come. This was money well spent. And they're all by schools. It's not like it's sitting in a park by itself somewhere. So it's a benefit to the community. Now our community would use our playgrounds.
So I think, like, yeah, and the difference to this, Luca, kind of back to your point, would be we, we had no choice but to pass the referendum. Like, we would have, like this last referendum, like we, we would have put outhouses outside for the kids.
Right, I know, yeah.
We're not in, we're not in dire straits for the rest of this, but this would really enhance everything else. And, and, you know, parking is a huge issue. We, we have parents that come during the day. They have to park all, park all over. We're, we're short of parking spots. Like this would, this would really solve everything. Now, you know, it's, it's a different type of market because we're not, we're not, this isn't-
We're not in dire straits.
We're not going to cut staff. We're not, you know, this is, you know, we will just live with the field that doesn't drain and your kids come home with money for you.
My kids have played on that field. I agree with everything that needs to be done. I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just looking at it from the community out there. We have 401, 41 kids? So we have that. The community sees, like, whoa, whoa, my kid doesn't go there.
Yeah, I mean, it could be.
I just don't want to-
It could be. It could be. But we'll just have to, I don't know, see what they, see what the community thinks.
Get to work, Luca.
I'm not allowed to remember that.
All right. We'll continue this conversation in November, but if you have specific questions or after you like look at this again, feel free to give me a call. And we can talk through it and I can walk you through everything. But that was the facilities committee, you know, is recommending that we look at just getting, completing everything else.
Okay. Any other questions? For our action items. I need a motion for the approval of the following policies. Policy 1.10, school district legal status. Policy 1.20, district organization operations and cooperative agreements. Policy 2.80, board member oath and conduct. And policy 2.130, superintendent relationship. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Are there any questions? Jill, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
I need a motion for the resolution, substitute teacher and peer professional pay table adjustments.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, Jill?
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Can I please have a motion for the D. Thomas Roters Clear System three-year renewal in the amount of $24,664.08?
Net over eight, three years.
Motion. Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Clay. All right, any questions? Jill, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Theberg?
I did, I did.
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
I need a motion for the temperature service company HVAC service contract for one year in the amount of $13,196.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Jill, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
May I have a motion for the regular, the regular payer to F. H. Passion, S. N. Nielsen and Associates LLC in the amount of $1,535,005.85?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Jill, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
And now I need a motion for the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $1,875,000, the general obligation school bonds alternate revenue source for the purpose of building and equipping in addition to and altering, repairing and equipping the Pinoyar Elementary School, providing for the pledge of certain revenues to the payment of principal and interest on said bonds and the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay such principal and interest if the pledged revenues are insufficient to make such payment and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
And I do want to remind the board, this, these are alternate revenue bonds that we are taking out of our budget. This is not a tax increase, so our community will not see this on their taxes.
Jill, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes, because these individuals, we'll just go through. We can.
All right, we have some discussion items. I'm going to read them all and then if we want to go back.
There was one item for approval at the MOU.
Oh.
Number, uh, letter C.
Did I miss that?
Thank you, Jill.
I don't have it.
Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. I need a motion for the memorandum of understanding between Eastister Seals and Pinoyar School District 79 from September 16, 2025 through June 30, 2028.
Motion. Second.
Any questions? Jill, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Okay, we have a good amount of items up for discussion, so we'll read them. And then if we want to come back to review any of them, we will. So the first reading of the following policies, 7.40 is the non-public school students, including parochial and homeschool students. 7.40 student, non-public school students, including parochial and homeschool students, November 12, 2025. 7.90, release during school hours. 7.130, student rights and responsibilities. 7.140, student search and seizure. 7.300, extracurricular activities. 7.325, student fundraising activities. And 8.80, gifts to the district.
Are there any questions? I did provide briefs on all these, but are there any questions?
No.
On any of these?
We're all good?
Yep.
Okay. And then the IASB workshop follow-up, which every board member attended. We had it here in the morning.
I did include the printout from the IASB at everyone's seats, just so you could have it, have it printed out. I know sometimes it's hard to pull it up in board books. And I do want to point out one thing that was left, left off is the use of electronic communication. So we decided as a board that if there is any sort of emergency here, if the police or ambulance are called, that I would, I'd shoot everyone a text and let them know. That is, that would be a situation where we do not do a reply all because that is, that is the same as if I send an email and reply all. So I know that was kind of a new thing this month and we had like back-to-back kids here that had a, had some medical issues that I let you guys know about. But if, you know, if there's any ever, ever any questions, just, just either reach out separately, shoot me an email or a text and we just can't have a board discussion over text or email. And I know that, I know it, it seems natural, like when I text you guys and say, you know, the student is, is fine, at home recovering. Like everyone's first instinct is to be like, oh, that's great. Thanks for letting us know, but we, you know, we can send that to you separately. Any other questions on that?
No.
Again, with like the board agenda, just our timelines, those didn't change. But it was just good to review that and get back on there.
And I just want to say to the board, our woman that worked with us, Lori, she was very happy and impressed with our board. She thought we were all very in tune with things and she, she said, I just got a good vibe out of your room that you guys work together and we allow each other to express opinions. And kind of disagree, we agree to disagree, but she thought we got a lot done, so thank you. All right, how about a motion for a chairman?
Motion.
Second.
Jill?
Mrs. Salvador?
Yes.
Mrs. Wacholder?
Yes.
Mrs. Lazarovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Theberg?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Please get home safely. Does anybody know the cup score?
Yes, it's still 4-3. And just a reminder, next Friday, September, or October 17th, trunk or treat.